All right, this is six thirty. Everyone's brought. Mr. Driver, would you call the role? America twenty. Fifty daily.
Yeah.
Ms. Ferguson. Ms. Erica. Mrs. Lewis.
Yeah.
Mrs. Simmons. Mrs. Derrick.
Here.
All right, so this is our work session, which actually let's go through the first off without objection. We try to go forward as approved. I would take a. Does everyone have the that's here at the May thirteenth meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from the record council meeting on May thirteenth. Motion to approve. Mr. Terry. Yes. Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Uh, motion passes for nothing. All right, so this is our work session and in our work session, this time it's a northern organizational meeting, so mid-year organizational meeting. Uh, we'll be covering some introductions, some applications, and then our goals and review, uh, goals and objectives review. We try to do this twice a year, at the beginning of the year, uh, in January, and then now, um, this is kind of the kickstart to the budget planning process. So we can kind of see where the staff's thinking what projects are thinking about and suggest some of our own and see where we are. Um, so far, I almost missed this one, but we can.
Did uh, did this one?
Um, and outside that, we'll just have one, uh, executive session, but no decisions, uh, will be made during that. So I guess we can start off with the two people I don't know in the room guessing the introduction of our summer internship.
This is Claire Schmidt and Chantria Sip. Uh, Claire is working with our communications this summer, um, and Chantria is working with planning, designing, and development. We'll probably see them around and I'm gonna give them an opportunity to introduce themselves and talk a little bit about their education and interests.
And so I'm Claire, uh, fifth year now, most of our way in this December. And our policy is specializing in communication, be able to change upon communication. Um, and also monitoring the communication and.
Very cool. And we, and, and don't get me wrong, I think that we've made a commitment, uh, as a group to try to improve our communications as much as possible. And we're okay, but, uh, we certainly look forward to you being much better at it and helping us, uh, this year, so that's great.
Hi, I'm Chantria, as I mentioned, um, I will be up for years, yeah, I was listening. Uh, major it's environment, economy, development, the same with the, the specialization of the economy. And also the vibrant, the state regional.
They said they needed that for help, so we'll see how right now, right?
Well, welcome.
Uh, we look forward to working with you, uh, if you guys ever need anything from us, uh, great, uh, they're probably way more better suited to help you than we are. But we're happy to be, uh, listening in here and help you guys out, so welcome, uh, to the group. Um, America two fifty, Ohio community application.
Yes, this is a program, um, staff has reviewed, we're interested in participating in, just trying to get council's feedback before we move forward with the application. Um, I'm gonna give Mr. Stanford the opportunity to explain the program.
Really, Ms. Haley knows that I can't pronounce the actual name of the.
Whatever a two hundred and fifty is.
So yes, uh, good evening, everybody, so what we are doing is, uh, attempting to apply to become an America Ohio two fifty. Um, in celebration of the Americas semi- quinn's annual, the two hundred and fiftyth anniversary, um, in July of twenty twenty six, we have a couple of years. Uh, to back up a little bit, um, the state of Ohio. The state of Ohio.
Back in twenty twenty-two. Put me on record. Uh, back in twenty twenty-two, um, they actually announced the creation of a statewide commission, um, to organize all state celebrations and activities leading up to the event. Um, as part of that, and you guys can, I think there's a flyer, uh, or pamphlet for you guys, but, uh, a part of that mainly is to focus on, um, planning encouraging active communications, um, or communities, active communities. Generations of the anniversary by highlighting Ohio, um, and solve our community public fund stuff. We're still a very important state, but especially in history, we had a lot of role play, um, in the formation of the United States. So, um, that all being said, um, from our perspective, um, they are selecting two hundred and fifty communities, townships, uh, cities, et cetera, um, to, to join this effort. Um, to, to really start looking at how do we bring this event to the public, you know, what can we do? Um, to really highlight the, our history, but also the history of Ohio and the United States. So, um, I realize that we had our bicentennial, um, planning cities bicentennial back in twenty eighteen, a few years ago. Um, Union Counties was a few years ago, the state was way back in two thousand and three, so there's a lot of celebrations, but this is probably the big one, um, obviously for the country. Um, now, by joining this effort, we get a lot of resources that could help us plan, uh, and that could just kind of show through some of the. We have a lot of resources that could potentially come our way, including special access to some grant funding, uh, for some of the events. Um, we would be officially designated and receive special signage that we put up for the community. Um, obviously, they would help us promote these events as they do their statewide activities, we would be folded into some of their proportion materials. Um, and then from our staffing side, they would also serve as our liaison, obviously, the, um, staff person represented, um, on the, on our committee, actually. And then just helping with professional development opportunities and things like that. So the steps to becoming a America two fifty community, we already started the, um, application process, which actually was basically letting them know that we were interested. So we did that about a month ago, a month and a half, probably at this point. Um, the next step would be upon your decision or upon your, um, agreement, we would file an application, a formal application, and agree to become a two hundred and fifty, uh, community. So I think, um, we will have a resolution, um, coming to you soon, um, for consideration. If we are successful, if we decide to go down this road, the next step, um, would be the formation of a small ad hoc committee. Um, and this would basically be primarily, uh, city staff to begin with, and then we would open it up to community members. We've already identified some of the organizations we would happen to, obviously, people like the CBB, uh, Union County, um, uh, the Historical Society, you know, then obviously others, um, as time progresses. So, um, one of the things we're also looking at is potentially having this be the first quote-unquote project of the new CIC. It does fall into the promotion of civic activities, um, so that would kind of alleviate some of the, um, administrative burden perhaps on the city, um, and put it on the CIC. So we would obviously work closely with them, but I think that would be a great partnership to have the CIC, especially as we get going there. Um, and then also too, as we begin planning events, or as we would be gun, begin planning events, we want to make sure that we, um, consider all of the historic nature of Plank City, you know, that it's not just our view. Um, so public engagement will be key to this, we want to make sure that we engage a lot of the, the residents out there, um, of all backgrounds and, and all that stuff. So from that point, um, there is no formal financial commitment, um, to become a community, except that we get out of it what we put in, meaning we need to support events that we put on. So, um, they ask for, I believe, some kind of commitment as far as, yes, we will do something, um, but they don't ask for a certain range or number or anything like that. And then also, as I mentioned, we would be able to access potential grant funding, um, in the next two years to help offset any of our costs. So I know that was a very quick overview, um, but do you guys have any questions or feelings about this? I'd be happy to entertain this.
So personally, if you guys are supportive of it, and you know, this is twenty twenty-six, some of us won't even, you know, be here anymore, but, uh, you guys certainly will. You guys are supportive of this, um, I don't really see a lot of negatives, I don't see a lot of downsides, I see it as a positive. I see, um, you know, the, it, it, any burden that exists is probably on the staff, and if you guys are bringing it to us, I'm certainly not gonna push back on it. I think, you know, for Linda and it probably ties in. The like. Personally, I have no objection, I have, you know, if you guys want to take this on, I, I think it's a great idea. I only see positives, I mean, to be honest, so I have no pushback, no negativity, excited, uh, to be a part of it, but. If you guys are comfortable with it, um, I'm certainly comfortable with it.
I like the idea of partnering with the CIC, I think that would, um, I think that could be a really, um, partnership and.
Will be the first big thing we do with the CIC, you know, that we, that we sponsor that's outside of development is, that we can do something like that, and that's what we set that group up for. Is something like this that would be the council doing it, but the CIC can, can take that on, and also not administration taking on as much. So, yeah, I, I love the idea of partnering with that.
Yep.
So in our next meeting, we'll bring it up, right?
Bring us on a resolution. It does sound like no one's gonna push back on it, yeah.
So the resolutions, we'll probably have the first reading on Monday for the.
Sounds perfect.
Thank you.
All right, so moving into our council goals and objectives review and our budget, so. Miss Lufton, I spoke briefly about this.
Um, it's set. Edit this, uh. That's a dead solid eight.
I think, uh, when Miss Lufton mentioned, uh, if we break to go through this, um.
Kind of.
Updated, talked through the goals, kind of.
But without.
Spending too much time and then move right into the budget.
And then kind of come back and, is that?
Yep.
All right, so, um, on the first one, which is.
Is increasing village, uh, and just so everyone's familiar, that might not be familiar, we went through, and this year, we had some kinds of like pillar goals, right? Like establishing village-wide connectivity, and we tried to put all the subset goals under these, tie them to. Not everything ties perfectly, getting the budget done doesn't tie perfectly to these items, but, uh, the idea being that we, I think we. At, at our retreat, we talked about, okay, let's make sure we're doing the right things as opposed to a lot of different things, so, uh, that's where we stand. Uh, so increasing village. Right connectivity, um.
The great part here, uh, thing, so we got done, I think, was having the highest state university, uh, Norton, uh, plan, uh, put together. I.
Added that it'd be great if we could take some of that and say, okay.
Well, then what do we want to do with it?
Where do we want to fix, I think everyone knows, uh, certain areas of interest, so for me. Uh, west.
This is a big point of interest that we can start thinking about in the budget, uh, and what we could maybe, what we could do to increase connectivity there, um. What's the loop is, Mr. Stanford? Yep, perfect, adding the, the staff as.
They may.
Yep, perfect, perfect, perfect. Any questions on what we're gonna do there or?
For how that would tie in.
To the budget, I don't, Miss Lufton, do you wanna like test one and then talk about the budget, or do you wanna go through them all?
Um, I would rather go through them all and then talk about the budget.
Okay, perfect, so, uh, I don't see any reason to stop these as goals, I think.
Uh-huh, we kind.
Uh, but really, we haven't implemented.
D, so.
For me, uh, most of these goals can stay.
Hey, I'm comfortable with Mr. Stanford's additions and we can, you know.
Make this our goal, everyone's comfortable second half.
Um, second big one.
Was focusing, improving, expanding public spaces, uh.
You know, I think we did an unbelievable amount here, um, we talked about the depot project, we talked about, uh, the. Great project.
Also, I'm sure we're not two different projects.
Uh, even if someone might.
Uh, so I think that's great, um, we started to put together, uh, the land donation, perfect. Oh, the feasibility study is a great one, yeah, so, uh, maybe if we can hit on like real quickly, so where are we on the feasibility study? Is that something we want to circle back on the next couple of months, or?
Yeah, we can, uh, so we have our first community engagement meeting, um, that was led by the consultants, and, um, they actually just got an email today. Um, they basically compiled some notes on some of the feedback that they received, and they're actually putting it together, and they're going to come back to staff. And we're gonna talk about the next community engagement that we're gonna have, so this, this would be.
Yeah, as I.
As I read.
Room are kind of goals and objectives, and I started to kind of put additions and look at these things. I think.
And I wrote.
This, I think, in, uh, in the emails.
It's, it's. Add those departmental updates, um, having.
I think there's probably enough going on in Parks and Rec to schedule another one of those and just.
Kind of go through all of Parks and Rec's data updates, I think, all of council expressed interest in. Saying as close to that as possible, no bunch of this.
Happening, and I think our update was like March, so maybe if we get one, whenever we see appropriate. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, certainly do that, I was thinking more like September, October.
No, and, and I think that'd be great doing it in, in September, October, if the pool season's done, you can assess what happened at the pool this year, but it also play into the aquatic feasibility study you can look at. And then see what you need for all the events you have in the fall, because when pool season's done, then all your big events in the fall start, you have to start kicking in, so I think that'd be good. You come September, or early October.
I know we have the budget in that too, so whatever we do. Um, anyone have any big additions or changes, uh, or any, uh, issues? Oh, Mr. Herman did send, uh.
I don't know if you saw that, Miss Lufton, uh, he just pointed out some, uh, I think it was more connectivity, uh, issues of implementing.
And I forward that on, it was just highlighted, uh, intersection, hey, you were.
Yeah, got it.
He got his crosswalk, thanks, what else?
The depot foundation, when are they gonna start breaking ground, cause I thought it was, it wasn't happening, it hasn't yet.
I am working on getting quotes for that, um, it is Outdoor FX's extremely busy season, um, and the people that moved it said they can't take it off the trailer, probably till August anyway. So I touched base with Outdoor FX today, they said they should be getting me a quote back soon, we can award it and they can program it.
They were taking it apart, and then when I saw it on the flatbed, I went, took it apart?
Yep.
So the next big topic is continued. Growth, the area where, when we kind of go back, and maybe.
Uh, Mr. Driver can go through and clean this up, uh, for us, um, this is probably where we mark off the most things that we did, um, so we got the CIC. Uh, created, the overall hardware and develop, develop plan is developed, but not passed, so I don't know, maybe we keep that like half across.
Plan is just the policy if not.
Okay, fair enough. We could almost cross that one.
Mr. Terry, I do have, um, under A one, the forty-two corridor plan.
Yeah.
Uh, Randy Venturks here, we've been working on the US forty-two safety study, which integrates all of forty-two from Presilliard, New California. Uh, we're working with both county engineers and, obviously, um, and then the developments that are going on, they're gonna be responsible for and how the village can fill those gaps. So it has been a while since we started working on that, so I'm gonna ask Randy to provide an update on where we are with that.
Actually, I'm slow down here, we are.
Avenue Pike.
So basically starting, and the study starts at Avenue Pike at high school. It goes up through to California, so Madison County engineer, Plain City, and Union County engineer are all, are all part of this study as long as, as long as, as long as I'm at. We've, we've completed all of the background work, we've put together our recommendations for what we present for my life. Um, we've got, we're gonna be presenting, we don't have Madison again, that's the next step, we're gonna get us one together, we're gonna be with Union County and Madison County engineer. Probably in the next two weeks, um, I should have a conversation with Ryan Jim in Madison County this morning, um, and he's looking forward to get that scheduled, then we will present this over that. Safety, the actual applications due this fall, and if we win, right, we get the funding, this will be programmed for design in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and then construction twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so we know we are twenty twenty-eight, um, you know, we're, the recommendations are trying to take into account all of the development pieces along the way. We've got development required.
Provenance.
We've got impact fees that will be applied and the help of other pieces along the way, and we have a specific safety purpose, so there's three parts to this, which makes, and all those three parts depend on the targets at this stage, so. But that's where we stand on the, uh, on the process, um, probably gets full finish up here in the next two months, once we get through around with that, um, period, um, and then application be ready this fall.
ODOT did a study from seventy up to, what, so, gosh, I wanna see, twenty-three, I think, on forty-two, I mean, it was. Wait, but they didn't really focus, I, on, it was very general, and so you're probably building off of that, I'm guessing. Oh, yeah.
We're gonna study back forward, the work that they've happened in Intel, and they're studying back seventy-two Delaware, so forty-two corridor. And we've already studied all of John Pollard's, which is as well as whole stack, is separate.
Sure.
Um, those results are gonna be within the next, they'll be in the next few months, so we'll see what those are. And so he's actually gonna send that to me to make sure that what we have at high school, what they have at high school is not totally contradictory, or maybe they build off each other.
Okay.
Or maybe we can stake this out the project and they, yeah, whatever that, that looks like. But yeah, they're, they're starting to open this study back out and, updated, and because of Intel and, like, I'm just, you know, they're building up what they know are four or five on the greatest study on Intel, which includes. Parks and Rec, and points into that, so they're kind of better looking at this whole. So anything that we do, we make sure that.
So I'm most familiar with these, uh, studies that people are, so what's the output? This is like, uh, turn lane, uh, stoplights, is it?
Turn lanes, stoplights, maybe it's crosswalks, um, some of the regulations are checking, you just have to, uh, estimate, say, um, it might be. Restrain, or, you know, whatever those, anything you can think of, it's kind of on the table.
And when you, and when you say estimate, so we get an estimate for all of it, right?
And then we say, okay, well, this is the portion of Madison County, this is the portion of Plain City, this is the portion of Union County, and then since it's a state road, right? It's a state route, that is, ODOT also.
Partially responsible for implementation?
Yeah, so. It'll be the ultimate, I mean.
Yeah, ODOT will hold, ultimately hold on back for this cycle, whenever that time comes, and there would be, there would be.
Sure.
Ninety percent, ten percent?
Right, that sounds.
So ninety percent would be funded by ODOT, ten percent would be village. That's what they have to be struggling with, some of the, as in, that you're quite, you know, that, that, that's why, because that's what's right, that's right, that's right.
Absolutely.
So it's appropriate mechanism that's why we put in back in twenty twenty-one. That's, that's exactly what that's supposed to be.
Um, and then on a highlight that from a lot of meetings, a lot of discussions, when would we expect to see some form of recommendation, like this year, this?
Yeah, yeah, I, I would say in the next couple of weeks, I should know, cause Haley and I have been through, we've been through the regulations.
Okay.
We've worked those out now, we're gonna take it to the council, and we're gonna start with your person, so if that's what we're focused on, first, so we're gonna take those to the council in the next couple of weeks, assuming. You know, they might have some comments or threats, so it's gonna go down, I would assume that's on, probably, yes, to see what we have. Knowing that ODOT will come back and say, we can't do that, we gotta do this, but.
And I think it's due time, I mean, we're growing, especially on the forty-two corridor, I think it's time that we, we look back at this and see what, you know, issues we have, how we can improve these intersections, these crossings.
And I understand that the safety function, that only comes to safety pieces, right? So everything else along there that we want to try to incorporate, what we don't want is that all of our, say, that puts a turn lane in five hundred feet, and we're gonna put over, be, put another turn lane, you got it on this side of the road and then this side. And then we do a safety improvement at this intersection, yeah, we've got these two main gaps in between, so we're trying to make sure that the whole thing, this project in essence, even if we have a basic, that we know. Shouldn't the whole world is occupied for the next ten years, twelve, fifteen years.
Trying to get ahead of it.
That's great.
Um, the next one, based on your response, uh, Mr. Stanford, but maybe I'm getting a little ahead of myself on the funding, uh, laying back for CIC, maybe we don't need to fund it this budget cycle, or we can talk about the budget. I was more thinking that, here was, here was the generic, I think you just kind of put it, everyone finds, but we're setting up all these organizations.
These aren't, it's the CIC.
We need now, as a council, I was thinking that we should make a commitment to supporting those, through resources, your money, through whatever it is, so, you know, we have membership.
Street daily, um, but like.
Getting.
And that's what I was really trying to get at there, when I was adding. As an objective, I was.
Say you guys have to do anything, I was more saying, we need to keep it on top of our mind, so that we're utilizing these things that we set up, and we don't just set them up. Um, and we have to utilize them, but that's really all we did in there.
Um, on the next one, Landis Map is well taken, um, I wrote that a year ago, a little different climate, um, interestingly enough, I think I'd seen their map come to us. Towards us, um, I think a village map makes a lot of sense, and maybe we.
You know, mentally, not what we did, what we would do, um, but I, 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 it's a well, well taken. Yeah, there.
We're still definitely, I think, budget-wise, I'm targeting to do a land use, so if I, and updating next year, um, what's your plan, if we get started actually, sort of, the middle and part of it's not bad.
So.
Maybe.
Part of it.
We'll do that at the same time, because of all the other stuff. It, it could be a separate plan, it's been a separate attitude to come plan, but it's, it'll be all planned.
Very, very.
Yeah, and I do wanna reiterate the last little point there too, we have all been involved with Union County's content, so we appreciate that they've come to us and they've really, um, I think that's, uh, our, uh, our thoughts would be shared about how southern part of Louisiana is, is gross.
You mentioned our content plan, that's, we're scheduled to update that?
We're gonna start, probably start sometime next year, putting that, I mean, it's a, it can be a one, two-year process, um, generally, ten years is about the average, uh, twenty twenty, with COVID, we're a factor, a lot of them, not. Who to decide, uh, so by the time it would be done, we would be close there, so we may get it done in prior ten years, but, but the changes and everything we were saying.
Yeah, I mean, looking backward, or there's been changes to that, yes, we followed some of that, but there's been changes to people who sold land and is under a different use, and so I think it's time that we need to look at that.
And over the next, you know, the developments, the progress that will come in the next year, if, if some change.
For the, for the, I, I don't, I'm not sure I.
Um, WRC has been doing the county transportation plans, they call it CorpO, Regional Transportation Plan, that allowed us to, they identify safety projects around the counties. That's how we received the bicentennial park engineering funds, because it was identified project, so we just participate in that project, it's not too administrative for us, but we're gonna try to stay on top.
What do we, what do we consider done, or a bongo?
It's probably ongoing, I think they just passed the CorpO official plan, but.
Yeah, they're nearing completion, like a better, or something, that's good.
Years ago, did not join with WRC, we pulled out, I know, and, and I think for. Thing is important to be involved with WRC, because they're the regional plan, and I think we need to have a little say, or at least know what they're thinking coming out this direction, and, and so. And I think we need to have a little say, or at least know what they're thinking coming out this direction, and so I'm glad we're back with. See, I wanna see what was it, three, four years ago we went with them, so I think there was a time.
Sounds great, Andrew.
So.
Time to get our input, too, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I'm, I'm taking.
Um, continue to work on that.
Section of those.
Uh.
The point is well taken, I think we leave it on there, but we.
We are comfortable that.
The most honest, the most honest answer.
There is a change, so, yeah, so.
The next big one will be the sign code, um, we're looking at Marysville, but they're actually updating theirs right now, too, so we're gonna wait until what they find research wise and make sure we don't do something outdated.
And what's, what's not?
What's not, that we've done here.
And to your point.
May you stay a goal for you forever?
But as a focus for council, I think the big pieces.
Like figuring out the D R B, the figuring out the P P P, like the big pieces. We have done, I think at some point does.
Stop becoming a focus for us, um, it's, you know, they have a focus for you. Uh, but I, I, there is a lot, it's not like we have.
Definitely.
We've done lots there, so. Um, revisit housing.
Ordinances. Um, it's very tactical in nature, um, I think we.
So this is what I called, and I wasn't quite sure what I would refer to.
No, no, the Ryan, it's the built to Ryan communities.
So where we're at, with that, we heard some, um, submissions from the state legislature that they're trying to pass, um, some legislation, obviously. Um, that would be very, very, so that's kind of where we're stuck. However, that being said, I know communities will have the ability to retire permits, inspections, insurance, um, payments of, uh, that has, and stuff like that, so. Uh, Union County C V is actually needing that for Union County, and we're kind of waiting on them to prepare legislation that we could offer, if we look at it.
As for the short term rental?
Every week, right, I have to build the rent communities, yeah, okay.
Um, so yeah, so if it's more, I guess, that went back to my question, if it's more on the, um, we are prohibiting single family or rent housing. I don't care, so I had an issue here, which you must have did actually, uh, last year. Um, I, I, I don't think we can do that, but if it's Airbnb's, I think we just have to create a.
I think we should look at doing a registration, uh, for this, that so far, we don't have a lot of them, it's not, you know, I'm sure we're gonna get one for that, before there ever is, or if it ever was. Um, and I think from the last view, we had, we had, we, everyone seemed fine with it, so. If not, not, not necessarily for a revenue, yeah, just so we know where we're at.
Yeah, I knew there's one in our neighborhood.
Right there, it's right there.
Uh, I didn't, well, uh, I, and this, uh, this has been, I think the idea, perfectly, on all of this.
Was to understand what the legislation could be. Like what you're doing, saying, okay, let's say, I don't like, you said that, so we might have to follow the law. To not prohibit it, but understand and control this type of activity. Certainly, we're not opposed to multifamily where it makes sense, and rural housing where it makes sense for, uh, uh. Residents and, and future residents. I think that the idea of what happened in Marysville, the idea of large scale. Built to run, single family. It's not made, at least me, I, I think the majority of the group was like, hey, what, what is that, what does that look like? Because we, we don't want to build that direction. What are potential, uh, tools in our toolbox? It, and again, the body might decide differently, but what are the tools in the toolbox to potentially, um. Not restrict, sorry, regulate, regulate, per, per, uh, regulate those sort of developments. How do we, uh, make sure that we're ahead of that before it becomes a big issue, I think was the generic thought process.
Yeah.
So maybe we consolidate this one, um, keep revisit housing ordinances, and then, you know, maybe parentheses these. Um, I think that we just want to understand the regulations that are possible, so. Create and implement economic development center policy we talked about.
It can be done by the end of.
Love it.
Till I have.
Love it, love it. Um, the P C A D C, how's the council tax incentive complete? Great, um, I think that. The creation of those is, is complete, so that's great, and staff, I think, I'm tethering on the.
Um, everything is except the turd, um, we have, I think, four vacancies on the turf, but we're not gonna need to pocket that for a while, but. Yeah, we council thirty minutes, um, C I C, I mean, we, we can always use more, you know, but we're already.
Awesome. Uh, for, the next section is continually increase residency satisfaction. Um, we have successfully transitioned, uh, I know there are still some, um, customer facing. I think you'd like, I hear about, uh, I think this is she, she, I don't think it's important, they, they said she had some, uh, feelings, so continue that.
Oh, gotta call.
Having, um, Cindy be, you know, part-time, splitting her time with the district has been extremely helpful for residents.
We do, it's gonna be perfect, that's why we kept it, and we can always have better communication, uh, from our interns. Um, continued violation, hey, we can do, we can say we did the.
All right.
Continued evaluation of tools and objectives. Um.
Yeah, I.
I think we did a great job on C, in fact, that program, I think we really addressed that, I think that's, uh, there, on there. I think the go for the budget, I think the idea there is, um, just constantly as we grow, evaluate, uh, you know, the needs, I think. Personally, when I look at it, I see the planning department, planning department, it's a growing organization, and, uh, Renee's still the department. And I would love.
One and a half, all that.
One and a half, one and a half, we went from one to one and a half, but, so those are personally for me.
Uh, and I think that goes right into the bu, uh, the commentary.
I get a little bit. So we can, we don't wanna over hire, we never wanna have to cut it, uh, we always wanna be, you know, a little uncomfortable or until we make a decision, so, I get it. Um, any, anything else there from anyone? I think that's a good budget conversation. And then the last one is continued development, our organizational professionalism, um. I think this is great, I think, uh, I, I fully agree with the fact that it was a great partnership. Um, I think that we've had a great, um, relationship with P C A B A, things like that. I think one area, um, that I noted, that we can still work on a little bit is, uh, policy. I know we get lost in, um, day-to-day stuff, but trying to think of those policies that we may not have. That we may have a policy we ever needed, um, something, uh, I think, when we wrote that as a goal, I think it was in response to kind of us being, feeling a little reactive to policies, uh, things like the grant policies and noise ordinance updates. Um, and I think the idea of the council was, is there other areas that, um. We should have policies that maybe we don't yet, so, um, I don't know if we need to directly talk about, I think it's something that, um. Continues to always be on top of mind, because I think our goal is to be as clear and transparent as possible to our residents, our developers, our staff. So if it does come up, we just point to the policies, say, this is how we handle those types of things. And, and obviously, you guys don't have to answer now, uh, so.
Set.
Great, I think this is a great update, I think this is, you know, we're doing a lot, uh, there's a lot to do. Um, I think that realistically speaking, um, we really set up at the beginning of the year to start mid-year check-in. So, Mr. Dray, I think what maybe makes sense is to keep a lot of this stuff and just kind of cross off, say, you know, where it's completed, where it's done. Um, if anyone has any big additions outside of the addition that we kind of all made, uh, discrepancy in different colors, uh, I think there's, it's not like they have to be submitted in time, you can add goals at the moment. Um, so halfway through the year, if we have another goal or something, um, do that, so.
On that last, talking about professional, with our missions, are all of our staff, like.
Sorry about that, yeah.
I know we were struggling at the beginning of the year, I think getting some filled, I, I think this, halfway through the year, we look at these and say, is there anything that we're missing people on there, we need to add people on there, um.
Other than, I mean, this is standard, I'm, I'm primarily.
Regular meetings.
Um, one, we're on, we're at that, their first, second, third, so, first, I guess, but, yeah, so.
I just think that's, it, this mid-year, it is, as well, and, and it sounds like we're, we have other committees, because people fall off, because they get busy. We just gotta make sure we can fill them.
Absolutely. Um. Looking at.
I didn't put a lot down, because I figured this conversation tonight would help, uh, I, that, I have a budget conversation. Um, I think we're gonna, it, it'd be nice to have a, a update.
So we'd love to hear more. So we can always hear development and planning.
We will have a new review, couple of.
And then maybe the safety study, too, as well, and then there's a few other topics in the census that we've begun, um.
Work that that can become a, doesn't have to be a main, uh, topic, but it will.
Hit on it. Um. I don't have anything else, and we kind of, you know, welcome to be back, everyone's.
I just wanted to kind of, um, first of all, for our newer council members, the budget timeline usually goes, um, end of June, July, we have. Department head meetings, uh, staffing meetings, I'd like to meet with council one-on-one, or, you know, small groups, to just make sure that everything that you're interested in is covered.
Will give me an interesting look at.
Okay, sure, as well as a, a meeting with P N F to introduce your budget to them as well.
You're doing stuff you want to look at.
Their ideas are taken into consideration. July and August, um, Renee and I work on kind of mid-year numbers, drafting a budget based on those meetings and how they went, making sure that they can fit into, um, accounts with. The revenue and everything, um, September, October, kind of have second meetings, presentations to council, to make sure that everything was covered, um, kind of shore everything up. Uh, close to the end of the year as possible with, for December budget passage for the new year. That's kind of a background timeline. So right now, um, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware that twenty twenty-five capital-wise at least, because we are working on C I Ps, because we are, um. Taking so much grant funding, it's fairly programmed already, um, so if you have a new, large project that you'd like to see accomplished, and we have consensus on the project, you know, it might be engineering next year, and then, uh, you know, construction the following year. However, um, did want to just touch on what next year's gonna look like capital-wise, um, plus I included number one would be a comp plan update, we would like to see that. Hopefully with a R F P maybe later this year, and then award in January to make sure that gets started. It's really the guiding document, um, most of our staff wasn't here the last time it was updated, we'd like to some, uh, say in that process.
What are those generally around ish?
It's hard to tell now, uh, I've set seventy-five thousand, we paid fifty, like sixty, fast, but, yeah, it's, everything's. Yeah, it's pretty significant.
Yeah.
And we're larger now, so, yeah.
Seventy-five to a hundred, easy.
Yeah. It does take, you know, twelve to eighteen months usually.
Yeah.
Um, this year, uh, we are doing depot reconstruction, um, and doing the engineering for the depot plaza, so next year, we will be in building the plaza around the depot. Um, we have applied for some state grant funding for that, um, but right now it's, the cost would entirely be on us. Um, the depot, the, what I'm calling the rec space engineering, the potential splash pad playground, uh. That engineering, I'd like to see start next year, um, for future construction. The street dog park is scheduled to begin next year, the engineering is being finished up right now, um, but with the grant, it, we can't get this done until next year. I do have the full amount on there, we're currently trying to slim the scope a little bit to reduce the cost, it's a fifty-fifty split. The Grabberland purchase, we're applying for the O P W C grant, should be getting that in in July, probably find that out in October, if we do get that grant again, that's next year cost, and we'll be responsible for twenty-five percent. Maple Street Bridge, we've been working on this last year. Um, it's an example of, it's our project, it's an ODOT grant, they're basically the project manager, we just help where we can, basically.
Is that the municipal bridge funds?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's a great one, uh, it's entirely funded unless it goes over the estimate, so hopefully that doesn't happen, but it's on there for next year construction, finally.
Is there right away taken?
Um, it's very minimal, there's only four parcels.
Just a little, it's, it'll take you a year to get through that with ODOT, that's why it's probably taken some time.
Yeah. It isn't scheduled until like September, we had a meeting about it yesterday. Get, get ahold of people. U S forty-two West Avenue intersection, again, that's ODOT let, um, we're responsible for ten percent and anything over the estimate, I'd be again next year. The Uptown Crosswalk, this is kind of what we're back to as a result of the connectivity study, one of the very popular projects that came out of that, identified would be a crosswalk on Maple Street, kind of a, um, pedestrian alley to get to the south side. So people walk all the way down to the intersection from the parking lot. Yeah, it's a long walk around to do it safely especially. We did apply for some community development block grant funds, um, and they are tentatively awarded, the Madison County Commissioners approve them being an allocation fund, so which pretty much means. And I think we find that out in July, but as part of that project, um, we would like to do that little strip of streetscape as well, so it'd be a streetscape, uh, a little bump out and a safe crosswalk. So if, if we do move forward with that, um, that will be a next year construction, the engineering will be finished up this year. Paving is always in our annual budget, um, and then bicentennial park, I have kind of a blank space, because CorpO funds, um, will cover entirely engineering. But since that will be ODOT, I don't think that'll probably be until twenty twenty-six as well, for construction at least.
So initial thoughts on the capital budget?
This two.
First, love it.
Grant, uh, count, they, they, oh, that's great.
I think.
That, that, just that.
It's very. Second.
Totally appreciate that. And for, if the idea, uh, progress, and for this is kind of, we are committed, we make decisions with past religion. So what I think we need to do as part of budget process, I, I, personal finance committee, which I think.
Yes, there.
Is to really look at that long-term capital planning, you know, so what is twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, start a long-term list of what's the next project? Because it's true, by the time we get to this point, it's almost already decided, so the personal finance can, you know, during their budgeting process, work on saying, okay, what is, that committee think is the right, uh, long-term capital needs, what's that thing? And then you can just, that, it almost is like, once you get to this point, that's like already decided, so we should be looking out into the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so. And that would be a good exercise throughout the budget process, um, and I think we've done it in the past.
I think we have, it's already, certainly, it's more of a refreshing, you know, list. Everyone put out. They, they tell her, like, no, you can't do a hundred things, and, you know, so.
So like, surely you can get it down to.
She did good on the new playground, so she got.
Playground did look great.
She got street cred.
We didn't mention that, so I saw lots of positive feedback on that.
Yeah, and that's a whole other project, we applied for that grant twenty twenty-one.
And you get it now, yeah.
Yeah.
So a lot of that stuff is long-term.
Especially with the. Get the federal, takes a long time, there's a lot of hurdles to jump through for that, yes, it does help us on, in, in that, but you've got to look at these things, so I like the idea, like you said, and see what we want to do. Seven, even though some of us may not even be here in council, it's, we need to look for.
I, I think, I think we've all agreed, and we've all talked about. Liberty. And. And, and I think that's, then, and the grants, and, you know, I think we're talking about the construction, you too, exactly. That's the way to, to not be reactive, so.
But.
I against, you know, I'm, I'm.
You said bicentennial. Move the state.
CorpO grants, since it's, it was like fifty-one thousand dollars, so ODOT has to be involved.
No, I was just curious.
Sometimes, because they do really a lot of the like work.
On your pending funding items of interest, uh, you know, getting from that sidewalk to pass on part, like, it's like, it would be a goal line, that like every kid, wherever they live, can get to the, like, like they should be able to get by sidewalk or somehow, I, I know this kind of abstract, and every time they add a new neighborhood, it's harder.
And harder and harder, but it feels like something that we should aim for, everyone should get that.
If you can do that, we're probably pretty connected, um, so I love that one, um, and then I think the only other one is, as I am constantly reminded by.
P C A B, uh.
Linda's on it.
Yeah, I just wanted to put these in your mind, start, uh, I don't really want our personnel or operating budgets tonight, but know that I'll be reaching out to you to get your schedule, so we can have those one-on-one conversations, and then kind of roll it all together.
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, perfect, and I totally get the one-on-one, uh, conversation with different members, I think that, at this level, you know, I think we've developed and we've evolved from early on, I think when I first had, it was like line by line, but it's, and now, this body has asked, um, to be more big picture directional, so, when you think about communicating, and I'm looking at all staff.
You think communicate about.
It's all about, for us, it's about themes, it's about, okay, here's, here's what we're strategically either person hiring, or here's what we need to do, because this is our end goal, and, uh, these are the capital projects, this is where we want to go, this is where we want to invest, feasibility studies, or where we want to invest in comp plans, I think this body has kind of expressed more of a desire to be at that sort of presentation level, uh, I think the one-on-one conversations.
To get that feedback to the. Right, yeah, I, I.
I don't think we need to go through, you know, I just remember a few years ago, like, why not, why not supply, like, I don't think anyone has any interest in that.
I think.
The time, the better spend, uh, for sending your ideas, your strategic visions, and how we support that, um, and think like, like, that's why I put out things like C I C, the living, how do we, how do we support those initiatives? Um, and I think, I'm looking around, no one disagrees, so I'm going to say.
Yeah, and by the way, first, that you guys are, you know, ones in the public office, we want to make sure we're helping.
We've never had a conversation about. I have the budget, my job, and I have to do that, I prefer not to do it, my.
Oh, I have.
All right, um, before we move into executive session, I will take a moment, um, we had tragedy this week, um, obviously, our thoughts are with the family, and.
And the fact, and, um, I didn't mention that on the top.
Uh, but I do want to take just a moment, uh, you know, our thoughts are with them, and they continue to be with the fire department, and, uh, we have firework tomorrow, I'm sure we'll be calling right there, uh, but, uh, it would be safe, and I'm just taking a moment there. Um, with, if anything else, I would welcome a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code, section one twenty-one dot two-two G one, considering the planning and conversation, public, with the interesting will not be coming back with any, uh, action, we don't have a lot of people.
I'll leave.
Yes.
Um, and we.